All right, so for roll call this evening we... Sarah is not able to be with us this evening, and Scott, and I do have a statement he asked me to read that which I will do in a few moments. But welcome everybody else. And we did receive a copy of the minutes from our December 5 meeting. Are there any changes I need to make to those minutes before I ask for a motion for approval? If not, can I ask for a motion to approve the minutes from December 5?
Second.
Right, all those in favor? Any abstentions? I have seen. And at this time, I'll invite anyone in the audience forward to address the board if you have something you'd like to share. And I'll go ahead and read the email that Scott asked me to read regarding his absence tonight under the Chair Report. Scott states that "I apologize to my fellow board members and the citizens, employees, and especially the students of RSG 22 for missing meetings. A combination of working night shift this fall and my new responsibilities as a legislator have made my schedule difficult. Both situations will interfere less going forward. Thank you for your understanding." And with that said, I'd like to welcome our guest presenter this evening, Timothy Pease. Tim is a former board member. He served on the board for nine years, I believe.
Yes.
And many of those years was as a chair, or a chair. I had the privilege of attending one of Tim's presentations when I first joined the board, and I felt it really helped frame the role of a board member very well for me in my board. And we thought with so many new board members that we would invite Tim to do a presentation. So, welcome.
Great. Where should I sit?
You can sit anywhere. You want to sit right here, Mr. Pease?
No, I don't want to.
I'll sit right there. All right.
Now, I've got a little bit of a cough. I don't think I'm contagious. Someone's sitting next to Ms. Nichols.
Well, what I have for you.
I've got some pens, too. All right. So, how's everybody doing tonight?
Wonderful.
Happy New Year. I just want to start by saying thanks for inviting me. I really appreciate the opportunity to come back. This is something I feel very passionate about. Politics is local, governance is local, and the biggest influence you can have is doing what you're doing around this table. So, anytime I have a chance to be around people who are willing to put their time in and efforts in, I do appreciate that. Looks like we have a full house here tonight. So, why don't I go ahead and... There was a brief introduction, but I just want to let you know that it's been about seven years since I sat on the board. I currently run a business in the local area, and although I'm familiar with school law, I'm not here to advise you on school law tonight. And I don't... I've not looked at laws in particular. So, if you have any questions, I would have you talk to your chair or talk to Mr. Lyons if you have any questions in the right direction about specific stuff. So, first of all, let me run through the agenda that I have for this evening. I think the first thing I want to do is cover the purpose of why I'm here and what we've talked about in the past, sort of fraying that up a bit. Then I've got a quiz for you to take because we are in a school setting. So, you probably want to know what the questions are. I'll give those to you in just a minute. Your only requirement for the quiz is to be honest. After that, we're going to go through the answers to your questions a little bit. You can read in the audience. I might read them up loud. But that sort of helps set the tone for the evening as well. Then I've got a presentation I want to go through, and I think probably that's been handed out. So, we'll cover some of those topics there as well. And then after that, I'm going to give you some final thoughts about the urgency that I think you may want to have as you consider your duties as a board member. So, when I spoke to Mr. Lyons, probably a month or two ago, I went through the list of folks who are currently on the board, and I also went on the website to look at the bios. That's really cool. That's something that I just relatively new and didn't have that before. So, I think that's helpful for people to see. It was helpful for me to see, too, what people's backgrounds are. Clearly, a very motivated group, bright group, good cross-section of the community, a lot of different types of experiences. I think what you have in common, though, is that your community is elected because they feel like you can do a good job, the educational system of the board communities. And so now, you are really a student advocate. It's the school system, and the system has lots of parts, but essentially, you're an advocate for students and their education. So, that's sort of what brings you together and binds you in common. And whether you've been on the board for a while or you're just getting started, there's a steep learning curve. You need to know a lot about a lot of different things. It is like writing a business. How many employees do you have in the district?
Three hundred and seventy-five approximately.
Yeah. I like to think I'm one of... Part of a bigger company in the area, and it's got about 400 employees. So, you mirror that. So, it's the largest employer in the three, four towns I live in. So, that's a big job. So, you need to know about HR stuff, hiring, firing, all of that stuff. You need to know about policy development and governance and finance and communications. So, it's part of your responsibilities is to be familiar with that or make sure that there are people on your board to be familiar with that. So, a part of me coming in here tonight is to talk about some of those things, but also encourage you to continue your learning, whether it's in group sessions like this. There's stuff you can follow through the Main School Board Association. There are seminars you can go to, online materials you can go to for your professional development. So, I encourage you to make that a habit regardless of how long you've been on the board. So, with that, I've got some paper. Do you all have something to write with?
Need a pen.
A couple of pens.
Oh, I have extra pens. This is what happens when I put them in first.
How many administrators do we have here tonight? You guys get to... You guys get to listen to me, too. Should be some paper. You guys aren't too nervous. So, at the end of this, I'm going to collect pieces of paper. Like I said, I may read some of the answers just to get a flavor, and we're all here. People write down, but I'm not going to point anybody out and put yourself out of your mind. But I'll keep the pieces of paper with me, too. It's the most important thing is to be honest. So, the first question is, this is from your personal perspective. What is the role of the board in your view? And I would encourage you to be brief. All right. Second question is, what is the most important strength you bring to the board? And for administrators, it's the same question applies. So, what is that you bring to the board by your presence and your interaction with the Okay, the next question has two parts. The first part is yes or no. First part is, can you improve your effectiveness this coming year as a board member or an advocate or administrator in front of the board? Yes or no? Second part is, if you answered no, what do you think you can do to improve your effectiveness?
What was the first question again?
It's a bit of a trick question. So, if you... Do you think you can... What was my first question? What is the role of the board?
No, no.
Can you improve your effectiveness this year?
Can you improve your effectiveness? So, unless you think you are operating at 100%, then you would say, no, I can always be more effective. So, if you can be more effective, that's what I was getting at. So, I'm assuming that everybody here thinks they could be more effective.
Yes.
So, why don't we just skip to part two? How can you be more effective as a board member in the coming year? The last question is, what is the biggest challenge facing the district in the next All right. When you're done, if you want to fold them or hand them to someone. So, the first question was, what is the role of the board? Let me just read some sample answers to see if this resonates with you. Impact and influence the future of our children. Ensure policy for the students' spare. Put students first. Support, guide the school system. Provide the best possible education for students, underlined a couple of different times, in the community you serve. Oversee the running of the school system, see that it's well-run. Support, question, and encourage ideas for change and innovation. Policy development and mentoring, monitoring for effectiveness, resource development. Provide a framework, policy development, resources, administrative. Strategy, policy, oversee the superintendent, make sure the district's run effectively. Establish policy, not to micromanage. Ensure the district is run properly. Supervise the superintendent and set policy. Board makes sure that the school department is able to run successfully. We make policy. Broadly oversee the district, its operations, set policy, ensure policy is followed, not day-to-day operations. Make sure the district's well-managed. Make sure the district's well-managed. Manage well. Change a little bit. You get the picture? I feel like I don't need to be here, actually, because clearly, as a starting point, I think the people in this room get it, the role of a board member and the role of the board itself with respect to the school system. How is it... What is your ultimate role and its set policy and guidance? And we'll talk a few minutes about how that plays out in certain scenarios. But generally speaking, you're on the right track. That is your role. Now, to carry out that role, you have to bring to the table certain things. You have to be prepared when you come to meetings. You have to study the issues. You have to ask a lot of questions. And that's a lot of the things, the time that you have to put in and the effort that you have to put in. But generally speaking, it sounds like most people are on track with what they are supposed to be doing. As I said before, when I looked at the background of the board members, you come to this table with a lot of different types of experiences. So, I would encourage you, and we'll talk about this again in a few minutes, is to make sure that you are leveraging those strengths that you bring to the board. You have different things that... Different experiences that are different from other board members. You need to be able to make sure that you are using those to the best of your ability. So, when I look through some of the answers here, strengths, finance, capital projects, running businesses, knowledge of educational policy and business, fiscal management, education professional, expertise in education and leadership, school leadership, good listener, reasonable person, willing to compromise, very good traits when you're on a large board like this. Passion about education, legal knowledge, asking effective questions, willing to listen, level-headed, balanced approach, pragmatic, passionate for progress. You get the picture? So, there's some specific skills in there about their educational background, fiscal management, business management, and also some of the other skills that you need about listening and asking questions and being able to work together and compromise and find solutions. So, all of those skills, they're all very important regardless of whether you can read a balance sheet or you can read people. Those things are very important as you're helping to run a district. I'm not going to read what people said about how you can improve your effectiveness. You wrote that down. Try to remember what you wrote down and work on that because that's something important, too. Focus on your strengths, but also focus on something you can do better and get better at. I will read the answers about the biggest challenge you're facing because I think that's important so that you're kind of on the same page there. The constantly changing political forces that impact regulation, finances, policies of schools. Preparing for superintendent departure succession plan. Hiring a superintendent. Superintendent turnover. Math scores and securing a new superintendent. Budget constraints. Superintendent turnover. Hiring pools. District leadership. Superintendent. Hiring and retaining teachers. So, curriculum issues. Changes, constant changes that require retooling. Keeping up with everything that is changing. Making sure you have enough resources. Attendance. Community and student engagement. Budget. Board retention and board understanding, knowledge of the district and how to effectively efficiently operate the business. So, some themes there. Personnel turnover came up a few times. So, one of the things I was thinking about along those lines is... Rick, how long have you been with the district?
Twenty-seven and a half years.
And always as a superintendent?
Yes.
So, let's see. That goes back to 1990.
July 1, 1992, to be exact.
Nobody here was on the board at that time?
No, sir.
Has anybody been on any school board that's gone through a superintendent change? So, that's a... That's a skill that nobody has. It's an experience that nobody has. Anybody... Any of the administrators gone through a superintendent change? Okay? So, one person? That's not a lot of experience. Here, anywhere?
Oh, no.
All right. Two people. So, in some districts, it happens a lot. In some districts, very close to this group of towns, it happens a lot. So, but it hasn't happened here. In fact, we've had very few superintendents in these towns over the life of the district. So, that is something that I would be shocked that if it didn't show up here. So, that's... That is something to focus on. Budget, that's something to always be focused on, year in, year out. That's an important issue for people. Are you providing the right resources? Are you making sure that the education you're providing is affordable for your communities? And then making sure that... This is a concern here, making sure that you're able to keep up with changes so things move fast. And are you able to keep up with those changes in terms of your own personal development and in terms of your operating as a board? Are you able to manage those changes? So, those are the three themes that I read. If you picked up others, you have other personal ones, you know, think about those as well. Leadership turnover, budget, and constant changes, those seem to be the buckets that you have.
Was the administrators' answers in there also, or was that...
Yes.
They were mixed in?
Yep, they were all on the same team. Yep. I didn't see a lot of difference. So, that's good. I think that's helpful, that if you're all on different pages, it would stand out, for sure. So, any questions about that exercise? Was it useful? There's going to be some more homework that you can take home, but if you all think that it would be useful to collect these answers and have them stored someplace, I'll do that as well. But I'll let you guys just think about that and decide that later. So, the next thing I want to do is turn to the presentation. And I've given this probably about five or six years now to various districts, and I haven't changed at all that much. I mean, I refresh it from time to time. But what I've found is that it's not as much about the specific content as it is about the ideas and the thinking I want it to generate, not just tonight, but in the future as well. So, I kind of labeled it becoming a guiding force on your board. And I chose the word guiding because, as we talked about before, as a board, you're setting policy, you're not running the day-to-day operations of the district. So, you're sort of providing that guidance, that leadership role. And I think most people who put the effort in to get elected and come to these meetings want to make a difference. You want to have an influence, and you want that to be a positive influence, one way or the other. So, guiding force, I think, is the way... I'd like you to think about your role as we go through these topics tonight. Got three different sections, knowing the essentials, and that goes to some of the basics, basic requirements of main state law about what you need to do, what your responsibilities are, and also what the responsibilities of superintendent and school leaders are. Then I want to talk about how you might be able to expand your influence on the board. And then talking about becoming the leader that you want to be, that's some introspections of the homework that I just mentioned. So, let's talk about the essentials. So, it really boils down to your major responsibilities. And as I said, this is set forth in main law. So, one of the things I want to stop right there is that all of you are elected from your different communities. But once you are elected, you are serving a school administrative unit. It used to be SADs, CSDs, RSUs, you name it. But those are all entities, except for municipal units, where you're really governed by the state, and you have your own, you're able to give your own funding, you don't have to go through the town to do that. So, you find your responsibilities in state law as opposed to Frankfurt, Camden, Winterport, Hoover. So, that's... You get your direction there. Where it sometimes gets crossed up is if you have a town official. Said, wait a minute, you've been elected from my town, I'm a town official, I should be able to tell you what to do and how to vote on board matters. And that's, you know, if that comes up in your particular situation, make sure that you talk to the chair, make sure you understand your own roles, and have a conversation with that particular person, and make sure you get that squared away. So, if we go to the slide where it talks about major responsibilities, so we... You guys talked about it. You guys hit it on the head, which is making policy. So, policy can come in a variety of forms. So, I've looked at some of your recent agendas. So, obviously, policies can be written down, and they've got... It's alphabet soup, the different policies that you have. And you have your first reading and your second reading, and then, you know, they used to come in big binders, and now everything is fortunately online. So, those are your written policies. And if you work in a business, you have written policies, but not everything, every detail that you follow in business or in the school system is in that written policy. Some of that stuff is just your practice, maybe your regulations, maybe your handbooks, the way you do business. So, there isn't a hard and fast line. I can tell you, obviously, you're responsible for those written policies, but you also have your practices and other types of things that can really become your policy as well, how you do business. And that's where you have to be careful about the boundaries between the board and the administration is, you know, this is your meeting as a board. So, you can do things about the length of time and what's on the agenda and so forth. But if you start dictating how things happen at the school level or at the superintendent, assistant superintendent level, business manager level, that's when you have to just assistant superintendent level, business manager level, that's when you have to just be careful about that. And a good superintendent will have a good working relationship with the board chair. And that's generally where those conversations will happen and say, okay, I feel like we need to have a conversation about where the lines are. So, that's, I think this particular board, if you're talking with Rick, doesn't seem to have a problem with that. Is that fair to say?
That's fair to say, yes.
So, the next topic is taking care of the infrastructure. So, this is an important one because it, and I found it when I was a board member, that it would be easy to rely too much on the administration when it came to infrastructure issues. Back fifteen years ago, we were talking about trying to get a new high school. That was our focus. And that's good. That was, that was the appropriate thing. But at the same time, Greensboro was having roof issues. Weather, he was having window issues. We were always having paving issues. We were trying to figure out whether or not to close the Newburg School. So, those are really thorny issues. And trying to think long-term as opposed to just voting on issues that the administration gives you, hey, I think we should get new windows. And I was able to, we were able to get some, some grant money for that. Okay, that seems like a good idea. That one, I think, takes some, takes some thinking and some long-term planning. And I know we have some people that are talented around this table about long-term planning and, and business planning and so forth. So, I would encourage you to put some effort into that one because that one is, is easy to, to just let the administration handle. And I think that's some, something that you need to pay attention to as a board. Next one, hiring superintendent. So, you know you may be faced with that at some point in time. Unless Rick decides he wants to.
No, that's, that's clear. That's definitely.
So we're not.
Some point in time is here.
Some point in time is here.
It is here, alright.
So, have you guys talked about that much?
I think he keeps reminding us.
Yeah, I would get some, I would get some advice on how to, how to do that as a board. That is, that's a big undertaking. And so trying to figure out the process, how to do that is a big deal. It's a, it's a big decision. Adopting curriculum. So this is again, one of those, this is like infrastructure where it takes some, takes some work. Because curriculum is hard. And it's, it's not something that a lot of board members have as a background. You might, if you happen to have a background as a teacher and administrator, now you come onto a board. But that doesn't always happen. So, that is one where if you've got a couple of people on the board who are willing to really dig in, I would encourage you all, to encourage them to do that, do that work, get up to speed on the curriculum and the different choices that are out there. Because again, that's one that you could, if you don't stay on top of it as a board, then you are sort of, you know, giving, giving that responsibility to the administration. So, that's a hard one to dig into, but I encourage you to do that. Approving superintendent hiring recommendations. So, there is a really funky process in Maine about how you hire people. Does anybody want to explain that?
We don't hire them. Superintendent does, but we still have to approve them for some reason.
So what are the, what are the three steps?
I would, I would say the administrator, building administrator would recommend to Rick. Rick would then interview the person. He recommends that person if he so wishes to us.
And then, once, once you approve a candidate, then?
Not make the offer or make the offer?
Yeah.
What was that?
He decides whether he wants to make the offer or not. So we can approve the nomination, but he can still decide not to make the offer based on the other information he might acquire at the time.
That's correct. Does anybody know why that is? I don't either. As Karen said, new information may come to light.
That's the three steps. You nominate, the board approves, and the superintendent employs. Superintendents have better lobbyists than boards?
Very possible. So, the, the, since it's about hiring, but there's also this funky process for exiting. I have a headline here. Anybody see this? A couple of weeks ago? Residents' colleagues say superintendent forced high school principal to resign. This is from the twenty-second of December. Who, who's read this or familiar with this situation?
Yes.
I read it, but what school district was it?
It's RSU twenty-two. Just one away from you guys.
Where are RSU?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
This is, that was twenty-one, we're twenty-two. That's why I said one away. Not really one away, but. So, I encourage you to go on the Bangor Daily News and read this because this is the sort of thing that you can find yourself in in a period of no time. So, the backstory is that a longtime high school principal is coming up in her third year of a three-year contract. So, her contract was set to expire at the end of twenty, at the end of school year eighteen nineteen. So, in Maine law, the teacher, the principal would get notice of renewal or non-renewal by, I think, March first of twenty nineteen. At the beginning of the school year, the principal tendered her resignation effective at the end of the eighteen nineteen year. There's a little bit of questioning about that at some board meetings at the time in August. But it really came to a head when a resident wrote, showed up at a board meeting, just like you had tonight, and at the public session stood up and said, it's been brought to my attention that Principal Cressy is being forced into early retirement. To my knowledge, having reviewed previous meeting minutes, it appears that this has not been fully examined by this board, but rather has been executed exclusively by the superintendent. And then, of course, instead, my main concern is that the school board has forgotten its role. And that's what we're talking about tonight, right? Roles and responsibilities. So then, this is what the person said. You and your eleven colleagues collectively, collectively manage the superintendent. The superintendent does not set the agenda. The superintendent does not run this board. So I'm asking you very simply, have you had the opportunity as a board in executive session to hear from Principal Cressy on this matter? And if not, why not? There's a lot of stuff in there, isn't there? And it's pretty complicated. I'm not even sure it would be appropriate for the board to say, I want to have an executive session with Principal there. That would be interesting as a board chair when you're be faced with somebody standing up and saying something like that.
Right.
That would, you're asking us to tell you what we discussed in executive session?
On a personnel issue.
On a personnel issue.
It, it, it doesn't look like they ever went into executive session to talk about it.
Be able to answer that is.
But what, what struck me in the very beginning, the board has forgotten its role. So now you have a community member who is, you know, clearly agitated about an issue and is saying, you guys don't know your role. I know what your role is. I'm a stakeholder in this community. So, that's why it's important that, that you guys do know your role ahead of time. So when that person stands up there and says, you guys don't know what your role is, you say, actually, no, we do. And we know what, what, generally what the rules are. In a specific circumstances, you may need to take a moment to think about it, consult with a lawyer and so forth. But it's important because you never know when something like that is just going to pop up and, and hit you. And something like that can really pull a community apart pretty quickly. So, and I know that the board chair the next day wrote an email explaining the situation. And so it looks like it's died down a little bit. Maybe it's just the holidays. But it looks like the, the board is doing the right thing in a difficult situation. So, this stuff matters. Like this is real life. And you just never know when it's going to pop up. Alright, back to the presentation. Budget. Sorry, was there a question?
No, just a comment.
That's why we're glad that Karen's with the chair.
So recommending the budget. So, the budget is another one of those things that people mention as, as crucial. How many people have sat through a district budget meeting? Me too. And that, the process leading up to the budget approval, you know, it's crucial. Like you can't just put a budget together and show up at a district budget meeting and hope for the best. You guys know, come a couple of years ago, how, how important it is to, to make sure you're getting that process right ahead of time. So that by the time you get to that district budget meeting and questions are being asked, that there are board members available to advocate for the budget. This is why we're doing so. When I say advocate, I mean, meaning explain. Like, this is why we're doing it. These are the choices that we had to make. And so that's very important. That's something that, that you should own as your budget. Next, Premier Union contracts. Those can be controversial too. And while we're talking about skills and backgrounds and so forth, it's important that you have people on the board who are willing to serve on negotiating plans. And that's a, it's a time-consuming, can be a difficult community to be on, but that's very important as well. And again, that's one of your responsibilities as a board, is to improve those contracts. So on the superintendent's side, carry out policy. We've talked about that a lot. Keep records of board meetings, keep the financial records. That's super important. Rick and I have asked, talked about, we, people, the, the things that get a lot of attention are sports and athletics and, and whatever happens to be the, the thing of the day. But the, the day in and day out management of the district is absolutely crucial. Because you can get focused on the, the thing of the day, but you've got to be digging in to the money and making sure that is well managed as well. Making sure the bills get paid. Enforcing school board rules. So, you talked about policy before. You set policy. The superintendent and the administration enforces school board rules. When it comes time to evaluate the superintendent, that's where you have those conversations about whether you as a board are, are, let's see, satisfied or, or have input to the superintendent about how well he or she is carrying out, enforcing the rules. Where we talked about nominating teachers and principals and supervising school employees.
Before you leave this.
Sure.
Page, can you talk a little bit about going back to policy? You've got Mig's policy on here, but some of the reading I've been doing has been talking about the importance of school boards actually monitoring policy, reviewing policy, looking for, looking at whether it is effectively doing what it was.
Yeah, that, so, one of the reasons I, I wanted to look back at some of the policies, I looked at some of the red lines that, that, the policies that you've made. And the purpose of that is making sure that those policies are relevant. Because you can, you look at the date, it's very, and some of those policies are written.
Yeah.
Even before Rick started here. And, and if you don't review those on a regular basis, you might not even know what it means. Like, you can read it and go, I'm not sure what was intended by that. So, it's very important to make sure they're refreshed and staying current. So I looked at the one about student searches and questioning. So, that, that was interesting, to see the, the direction that you guys are going in there. So, I think as a board member, I would say, let's, let's talk about some circumstances when that might come up. Because I, I noticed how searching is a little bit, you can search in a lot of different circumstances, but it seems like you can, you can only question it in some more limited circumstances than just by the way the language is laid out. I don't know if that was intended or not. So, that's why you need to go through those policies, especially if they're being changed. That's when you say, okay, well, why are you making the change? What are you trying to accomplish with that? And then making sure that, that whatever language you put in there is actually accomplishing what you collectively wanted to accomplish. Does that help? Any other questions before we leave that page? Okay, how can board members effectively carry out their responsibilities? So, the first one I said is be familiar with school law. There, that's a tough one because, like, I'm a lawyer, and the last thing I want to do is sit and read a statute. I mean, it just, it just is, because it doesn't, it's hard to read it and put that in context, especially if you read Maine school law. Because it's just, there's so many different types of districts and it just, some of it you read and it doesn't even make any sense. So, what I would encourage you to do is know what, generally what the statutes are out there. But get some training. Drummond Woodson puts on a lot of seminars. I would go to those, targeted issues. Let's say, I want to learn about employment law a little bit then, as it relates to schools. So, so, you know, make sure that you are taking advantage of those training opportunities. And then ask a lot of questions, like what does this mean? So, you know, we were just talking about policies, your own policies. That's, you're responsible for being able to explain those policies. Who's responsible for being able to explain a statute? Legislators that pass it are around, that talk to about it. I guess you've got a legislator now that's on the board. And maybe you can direct all questions in terms of statutes to that person. But I'm not sure how effective that would be as well. So, take advantage of those learning opportunities. And divide and conquer too. I would say, you can collectively as a group say, we need to learn more about X, Y, and Z. Any volunteers to go to the seminar? And that would be a way to do that. And then bring that learning back. Be familiar with their own policies. And one of the ways to do it is, is through those refresh opportunities. But that's part of your homework too. So, let's say you want to spend thirty minutes a week just going on the website and going through one section of policies just to know what's out there. I think that would be a good use of time. I'm accepting the will of the majority. So, as a democratic body, it's, it's important to debate issues. I've always thought it was useful to, to have pros and cons. And if people are willing to, to take up what may ultimately be a minority position and advocate for it, that's a good thing too. So everyone is hearing the debate. But at the end of the day, when a decision is made, it's important that it's supported by everyone on the board. Even if you happen to be in the minority for that particular position. Let's say the budget gets voted on and, and you didn't vote for the budget. But you're a board member, and it's the board's budget. And so, it's your responsibility to own that budget. Now, I think it would be foolish for me or anyone else to think that if you voted against that budget, that you would be out there with social media or standing by the side of the road saying, you know, this is the best budget ever. But I don't think it's unreasonable to expect that you would at least remain silent on it. You should not be advocating against the budget as a board member, even if you didn't support it. Because that's the will of the majority. And so that's what I'm talking about. The vigorous debate, but once a decision is made, that's the will of the majority and so you accept that. One of the things that I encountered, it was not that particular issue, but I encountered the issue of, that board members wanting to have everyone agree before we could move on to the issue. If everyone wasn't fully convinced and on board, then by golly, we ought to keep talking about it, and keep talking about it, and keep talking about it until everyone is convinced. And I, I don't think that's a good use of people's time. There's a lot of people there, a lot of different opinions. So, don't get bogged down in those things. I don't know if that happens with this group, but I experienced it some time ago. Referring questions and complaints to the superintendent. So, from time to time, you are going to be out in the community, and people are going to bring up issues. They may chat you up on Facebook, see you in the grocery store and so forth. But remember, you have a certain role as a board, as an individual board member. You don't, you don't have any particular authority. So when you get complaints and so forth, refer them to the superintendent. That's, that's the easiest thing to do. It's the most appropriate thing to do. At the end of the day, it's At the end of the day, it's going to help keep your sanity and help you keep focused on the main mission. Confidential information. So, somebody mentioned about revealing information when you get an executive session. So from time to time, if you're in an executive session, you're going to learn information, personnel information, legal information. You've got to make sure that you keep that confidential. You should not be sharing that. And then relying on the expertise of administrators. And that's a balance. Because before, I was saying, you know, what are you going to do with, how are you going to handle infrastructure issues, curriculum issues? So, in your, in your non-board life, if you're in a business, you know, you, you have your expertise and your focus, but no one can do it alone. You always need people, experts, to help give you information. And the administration is a group of experts. So you should rely on them. But that doesn't mean you can't rely on others. It doesn't mean that you can't, as a, as a body, say, "We want to hire different auditors than the superintendent's recommending," or something like that. And it, and it doesn't mean that you can't ask the administration to provide information you need to help make decisions. But do rely on them for their expertise. It's a, as I said, it's a balance, but they're a resource. So, for example, I mentioned becoming familiar with school law. You could go do your own research on that and say, "What is, what's the next Drummond Woodson seminar?" But I could tell you that Rick's got easy access to the folks at Drummond Woodson. And if you said, "In the next 90 days, give us a list of all of the free seminars that you're presenting, either online or in person, and, because we may want to send some folks." He'd have that out to you by the end of the day. So, that's, I'm talking about using them as a resource. Any questions about this? All right. Summary, know your job, do your job, and let others do their jobs. Pretty straightforward. So the next section is expanding your influence. So, if you do any reading on this topic, there's some, some things that just are troubling for most boards at one time or another. And the biggest one is lack of clarity. And again, it comes down to roles and responsibilities, expectations and so forth. So, one of the things that, I think about how this is going to come up in, let's say, in a year or so, when Rick retires, you have a new superintendent. And so, I've known Rick for quite some time. He has certain habits and ways of doing business, and it's fair to say, we all do. You've worked with Rick for some longer than others, and you probably have just a way that you work with him on a regular basis when it comes to school stuff. Is that fair to say? And in developing the agenda, it probably gets developed in a certain way. And what if you got a superintendent who showed up and said, "So, I know we've got a board meeting next week, so, Madam Chair, can you show me the agenda for the next meeting?" Well, Rick used to do that. Yeah, but, but I've never did it, because Rick was around 27 years, and so, so that's just a minor example of what the transition is going to be like. So, you're really going to have to focus on how you work together as a board and head of the administration. It's going to be a very interesting challenge for you. And along those lines, when it comes to communication, this, the packet of information that you get has evolved over time. And, and it should continue to evolve. It's got to, it's got to meet your needs, to make sure you have the information you need in a timely manner to, to do your job. It can be overwhelming. I have worked with some school districts who provide just unbelievable amounts of information and studies. I think some of the studies, they find out, "Hey, you should read this 180-page study." And sometimes I think that's just the superintendent trying to bog board members down so that they get so overwhelmed they can't possibly do anything other than just do what the superintendent wants. I've seen situations where superintendent provides next to nothing. And some board members have left, "Well, I, I guess I've got to trust you, because I don't have anything else to go on." So, you've got to find that balance of getting the right information that you need to make your decisions. And that, don't just accept the information that you get. If you read something in a policy that, I'm going to go back to the one I read, about questioning students, what's the basis of that? How, if that gets challenged, are we in legal trouble? Look, we had a lawyer look at this. Why do we need to do this? So, you know, show us the, show us some studies on that issue. So, feel free to, to do that, to get that information that you need to, to make an informed decision. The other couple of bullets have to do with how you behave, I think, in meetings and your other communications. And that is, you know, not trying to surprise people with your debate, not trying to ask gotcha questions. I've not experienced that as board. And I think maybe sometimes community members try to do that, try to goad you into it, but as a, as a functioning board, you try to, try to look for that. And then, the next thing you have to do is just remember your human resource constraints. You have busy staff, busy board members. You guys have a finite amount of time. You can vote for this. And so you make sure that you are being fair to the administration, not overburdening them, but at the same time giving the information you need. Those conversations you just need to keep having. Yep, all right. Tell them the minutes. So, under expanding influence, I had better board meetings and focus on leadership. So, you know, I guess that's a discuss, for better board meetings, I think, you guys are, I would say, the way that board meetings are structured now, it's fairly mature and well-run. But the board members, collectively, your experiences, I would say, on the fewer years, so I did this a couple of years ago, and I think it was 2.7 or so was the average tenure, and now it's under 2.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. So, and it's a big board, too. So, I bet there are some people that don't even speak during board meetings. Is that accurate?
Some people that don't what?
Speak during board meetings. Like, it's just, either because they feel like it's being said, or, or they don't want to waste time. So, what I would do is, especially with a newer board, is to do some, just ask yourself again, "Are the board meetings effective?" You can do a little survey at the end of meetings and so forth, just to ask the question, "How's this thing working for y'all?" And that's a safe place for you to say, "Hey, this isn't working. We're dead. I'm lost. I don't feel like I have any input, or things are running well." So, I think you need to ask yourselves whether it's, if it's working for you. Focusing on leadership. So, when I talk about that, I'm going to skip a couple of pages and go to that leadership versus management slide. It's a table. So, and I'm not saying one thing is better than the other. You need both. You need leadership, you need management. But as a board, I think you should be tending towards leadership, because that's where you have your biggest influence. So, are you doing the right things? Are you establishing direction? Are you aligning people? This is all about your policy and direction. And I think people talked about that, impact and influence, and looking back to the answers to the questions that I asked earlier. So focusing on change, focusing on the future, innovation. I saw all those words in the answers. So I think we naturally go there. I think that's what we want to do as a board. But you've got to figure out how, what is it, how does that manifest itself? So, I think as a, as a chair, you might want to have those conversations with the board, do a workshop. How do you want to make sure that we're focused on those, those big picture things, that mission stuff, where we're going as a school district? That is something that you can recognize. And then, I want to go to the last section now. Any, any questions about what you discovered? So this is, you know, this is a little bit about what you, what influence you want to bring to the board. And I think in order to do that, you have to remind yourself what motivates employees and, and what areas are your strengths, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. So it's, it's interesting, because I found, some of my reading, I, from 10 years ago, I found the acronym MAST. So what drives employees? Mastery, the urge to make progress and get better of something that matters. Autonomy, the desire to direct your own lives and purpose, the earnings due, what we do in a service of something larger than ourselves. And I think that generally reflects what, what drives people to be on a board, but it also drives people to be teachers and administrators, too. So, along those lines, mastery, autonomy, and purpose. I happened to read an article in a business magazine. Give me my voice here in a second. Hubert Jolie, he is the CEO of Best Buy. And Best Buy is one of those big box stores that has survived, considering all the others has sort of died. And he was asked, "What is Best Buy's greatest existential threat? What's going to, what's going to kill it?" And he said, and I think you can insert "student" for "customer" in what he said. "I think the existential threat for any company is when you lose focus on the customer, and if you de-emphasize inspiring the people working in the company. That combination can be lethal. Or, if you get sloppy on the cost side, that's your one. The winning formula on the flip side is if you have employees who feel they can build human connections, have enough autonomy to do great things with customers, and believe they can master skills. My role as a leader of the company is to make sure we have the right strategy and to work on the culture." Which is interesting, because 10 years ago, that's, I, mastery, autonomy, purpose. We're still talking about that today, talking about your culture, talking about your people. And guess what? Those words came through loud and clear in all of your statements. Culture, hiring, focus on students. That's what you guys want. So I think you're, you're well on your way. I think it's, it's an exciting time to be part of this district. There's some change that's coming up that's significant and hasn't happened in a generation and a half. So, I think you're onto something here. So I would say that, in closing, focus on your strengths. Remind yourself what you wrote down that you said you would, could do to be more effective this coming year. And, you know, just keep working at it. Any questions? Hard thoughts?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
It's been played a big role in our strategic planning process a couple of years ago. We're hopeful that it might be able to assist us as we revisit that, so we'll be in touch tomorrow on that.
And should I leave these comments here or take them with me?
I would leave them.
I'm taking them, right? I'm not going to send them out with no names attached.
Thank you, Jim. Take care.
And personnel, I don't believe we have any.
That's correct. We have none.
So we will move right into this superintendent?
Reading the essential behaviors outcomes proclamation is Jane.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our communities share the responsibilities to educate our children and themselves. Our schools, our communities, support citizens and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate. And our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, Jane. Item two, as you know, reading the papers, the article I sent you last week, we now have a new commissioner nominee that will be moved through the process. As a matter of fact, as we're speaking right now, I think our governor nominee is going through her process of moving into office. Pender Bacon, I've never met the lady, but she's the Assistant Superintendent in Brunswick. And what I've heard from people, they're very impressed with her credentials, looking forward to her leading Department of Education. In my opinion, we have not had a leader there for some years. So we'll be looking forward to that. Lucas, what do you have, sir?
Nothing new for this evening due to the holidays, but we did send out all the responses for the student survey a few weeks ago, so I invite any, anybody who wants to make any observations or say any thoughts about those responses to do so.
Thank you, Lucas. Ricky, you have our monthly report? So I'm assuming you have good news, maybe?
So to give you some context, we are about 52% through the student year. And as you can see, as you look down through each of those warrant article expenditure percentage rates, we are within the parameters we would hope to be for all of the articles. You'll see that for the teacher-based articles in number one, with regular instruction, number two, with special education instruction, we are actually in a favorable position as we move through the year. That is good for us to see at the halfway point, because we did have the increase in salaries that we thought might be problematic there. As you move down through Article Five, Student and Staff Support, we are a bit below the 50% mark, but those are from expenditures that occurred in summer, going right into the school year, so that will level out. And additional to that, transportation is favorable right now, and we do believe that trend should continue. So that's important to see. And then our debt service will have the next payout in May. So every month you'll see a favorable percentage there until we get to the point where we pay it off. Any questions on particular articles? And then I do not have a Assistant Superintendent report this month. Everything we reported on last month has stayed status quo and with holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you. Opening up to questions of board members? Mary Ann?
Pursuant to J I H R, have you received or approved any requests for assistance from ICE or CBP agents?
No, I have not.
Have you received any requests from ICE or CB or a law enforcement agent acting on their behalf for information about or access to any of our students?
No, I haven't. In your tenure, have you ever received one of those requests? Wow. I'm quick to say no, but I would say if I have, Tony, I can't remember it. And I would be very comfortable saying I could probably count down one finger if it ever happened, if that makes sense. But in my 27 and a half years, I can never remember that, no.
I would be very happy to hear the answer no to that question every time I ask.
Any other questions of board members? If not, we'll go into committee reports and finance. Pete, you're still chair of that, right?
Yep. We met prior to Christmas. It was a short meeting. We were in hopes of having our audit available that night, so we did not have it. So we still met. We just had a, basically had a warrant article review. So we still met, we just had a, basically had a warrant article review, an audit update, uh, reviewed our budget status report, uh, and we adjourned. And then we did meet prior to this meeting here, and we'll present with our budget draft and will be, as soon as that's out of the draft form, it'll be presented to the, to the full board.
You mean audit draft?
Audit draft.
What did I say?
Budget draft.
Budget draft. Uh, yes, audit draft.
I'm sorry, sorry. Great, thank you. Um, Rob just stepped out, so we'll go into athletic and come back to budget.
All right, uh, we met, uh, the 12th of December. Um, we met very shortly as an athletic committee and then we moved into a signage campaign committee. But Mr. Lauer informed, well, discussed with us, um, that our gymnasium does not have a name, um, but it's nicknamed the stable, and it was kind of something that's just kind of happened over the last few years that it's been in the school. I don't think anybody intended for that to happen, but it did. And so Fred thought it would be nice if we could get, um, on the far end of the gym, some letters made so we could put that, "Welcome to the stable." Um, and we agreed to do that, so he's gonna do that. It won't affect any naming rights, it's kind of, it'll be a kind of nickname thing, it's not immediately. If somebody comes in, went forth with a bucket of cash and wants the name after themselves, that would be something we could look at later. It could still be the stable though. We talked about the multipurpose field, about naming the multipurpose field, uh, we talked about possibly alumni field, uh, coming up with some bricks, brick papers with alumni names that anybody could buy and help fund that. We're talking about that more, of course, all the time. Uh, we talked about, um, athlete eligibility. Uh, there's gonna be a revision in the handbook pursuant to, um, so ineligible athletes. So as far as grade eligibility, uh, students have, I believe, what is it? Two, two chances before we go full suspension. So in that third suspension, uh, the way it's worded is that you wouldn't be eligible, that you would be eligible to come back after, help me out with that, Bill. End of quarter, right?
Yeah, end of quarter.
Yeah.
That's what worries us.
Yeah. And so the end of quarter with, basically, you'd be able to come back halfway through the basketball season is the way it would work out, which probably isn't the way that we want to do that. So we're doing that now, but we're gonna change the handbook so that won't, won't happen again.
What are you gonna change it to?
Season.
End of season.
Right.
So that that student wouldn't be able to come back with three weeks left of the basketball season. And it's not ideal anyways, you're not gonna, you know, to a season and you haven't been part of the whole time.
Will they be able to start a season if their grades are not eligible?
Every student is able to start. Um, if you were failing or if you didn't meet the requirements, when the season starts, you're moved to that level two where you are able to participate. You can't participate in an N K A sanctioned event, so you can still do with your teammates, and you basically have then a two-week window to get your grades up and prove that you're committed to being part of the team and keeping your academics up. So there is a, a shift there each time, just gonna be a refresh and a look at it.
Um, then we went into the, oh, oh, it was us, uh, eight, uh, student gate fee to commit to games. As of now, all the students are getting charged unless you play a sport. Um, when we were kind of looking at that, the majority, most of the kids are getting in free anyways because they do all play a sport, whether it be bad sports, they all play something. So the percentage of kids that are getting in that aren't playing a sport is very, very small anyways, so we would like to, to, um, send to the policy committee, D F D A, um, and change that so that all, so all students would get in free. The impact we don't see as being very much as far as the mission, the gate fee. We went into signage campaign. There's a whole bunch of bullets here that you guys can go over at your own, but just the first one there, uh, we discussed hiring a marketer to help sell signage campaigns for a commission, not a salary, but a commission. And I assume we'll be talking more about that this month or at the end of the month or anything.
Ethan, I'd like to, I'm gonna, I apologize for rambling on this one, but the multipurpose field, we're talking about selling of bricks. Believe it or not, we have a policy. I can't remember the name, it's about, something about selling bricks or what's the name of the, what's on a brick name. We had a big issue at McGraw School back in the late 90s when we sold bricks and ended up where people put, at the time we thought, highly inappropriate comments on the bricks, and we couldn't stop at that time, the bricks went in. But we learned a lesson, now we have a policy on that, so. We have a policy, I'll find it, so you can put that in your memory bank.
What did we do with the bricks? Did we paint them?
I don't know what we did with it. It's one of those things I'd rather forget about. It was, seriously, it really turned out to be a very contentious situation that occurred. So we do have a brick naming policy.
I think we're kind of hoping that some people are gonna have their names on there.
That's what we hoped, John, it didn't happen that way. Trust me, it didn't happen that way, John.
We also have a precedence for that commission. We actually hired somebody, when I first came on the board, Emil was talking about somebody that had been hired and given money and commission to go sell the naming rights, and after like a year came up with nothing.
Yeah, that's why we, yeah, with this commission part of that.
No, we have a policy in place, yeah.
That was a good point, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back to budget. Rob, do you have an update on budget committee?
Nothing new since the last time. We had no meetings in December, the next meeting's only 20 seconds.
Thank you. Building committee?
Yeah, we met on the 14th. Earlier this fall, we had our building walk-throughs, and at the meeting we discussed, uh, developed project list based on what we saw walking through these buildings. And it's detailed in the report that we even put together. But a bigger issue too is the roof forecast for the district. We've got like five buildings with roofs that are over 20 years old. The Wagner School is the oldest and it's in the worst condition. And we're talking with the roofing contractor to come up with a plan to address that, but I would say that could be, um, very expensive by the time we get all these buildings, roofs taken care of. Then we also discussed the, I believe, the Newburg School, the town has, of course, the option to buy it, I think in 2022. We discussed it a little bit, but I don't know, there was a meeting with the town.
Yes.
Administrators.
And Heath came to that meeting, we did have the conversation, just reminded people with the timeline wise, and we have some, um, future conversations that will occur.
But being on the building committee, that, that's building is gonna be needing some substantial work at some point. And the issue is that we wanna do it or wait and see what happens. And at this point, I think my advice is to wait and see what happens, just, you know. But we do have, we actually have education going on in that building. They have a pre-K program, so, I mean, we can't just let it fall down, and we, we have obligations to keep that building going. And then the campus electrical upgrade, we talked about it a little bit. And there are security systems that are being upgraded at McGraw, and they're already done probably by now. Whetherby in McGraw, it was supposed to be done the week of the 17th.
I'd like to follow up on Alan's report, Karen. Reg and I are going to Augusta, I believe, next Tuesday to meet with Scott Brown. Scott Brown is the director of school facilities. If you remember my district's status report, I talked about a financial plan called State Rural Renovation Fund Money. And my memory serves me that we had 3.6 million in this district over the end of the years. We're gonna talk to Scott about what that money capacity looks like in the future because it'll, it'll, it'll exactly what Alan's talking about, because there may be money there for roofs, electrical infrastructure and so on. So we wanna be ahead of the curve on that one, because we have not heard what the composition of those monies will be, and we're gonna try to find out now. We'll, we'll report back to you on, at the February meeting.
Education committee?
We met, um, right before this meeting, and, um, welcome back, Mary. She's still here? Oh, she is. Mary was there, very exciting. And we just varied high level, went over a new report card, and when I say a report card, I don't mean the individual grades that our children are receiving, but a school report card for a district. And you remember several years ago, um, school district received a letter grade, um, and it was just one kind of overall letter grade, and I believe that was under the No Child Left Behind?
Yes.
So now we have moved on to Every Student Succeeds Act, um, and with that comes a new accountability report card, uh, which is a little, it's a bit more dynamic than the last one. The last one really included just one grade, you couldn't, it, it didn't tell you much more than that. And this, um, has five different categories that independent schools are being assessed on, as well as an opportunity to provide a narrative about some of the good things that your school is providing and some of the, um, features that your school district provides. We, Mary received this email and this notification on December 28th, and she just got back to the district today, so, um, she hasn't had a chance to dig into the, uh, information regarding each of our schools, but she will be doing that over the next several weeks. Um, so we will be likely reporting this to, probably a presentation to the larger, um, board in the next coming months. It's called the Every Student Succeeds Act, um, and perhaps this, handout, Mary, could we have that sent out to the whole board?
Yes.
It's a nice summary of what that, um, new report card will include.
Mary, is that our results are informed, I assume, by the report you submitted in July?
It is a combination of test scores over the last few years, um, as well as chronic absenteeism rates and progress that's being made. It also looks at graduation rates and, um, we'll be able to look at subgroups and so forth. So it's based on a collection of data.
I will say that they are putting schools into tier one, which is the least amount of need, um, tier two and tier three. And all of our schools, except for Weatherby, are on tier one support, and Weatherby is not even qualified for support. That doesn't mean that we don't need to continue to make improvements, but that's kind of where we fall.
And all of this will eventually be public so that anyone can access the report cards on the D O E list.
Yes, and when I talk about support, I mean professional development, which is provided free of cost to our district.
Financial support.
Right. But it's professional development without us needing to pay for it, so that's good. I did ask, we had an opportunity to ask the administrators what they thought of this compared to the last report card, and they do believe that it's an improvement over the last process.
Thank you. Any policy committee updates, Joe?
Uh, pretty much we've got what was in the committee, committee, committee meeting minutes. We did have the presentation by Melanie Nishu on basically how the bus system works in terms of discipline, and, uh, you know, it's quite informative, uh, basically. I was glad to hear that, uh, when it comes to an issue of, uh, discipline, it's really the school, you know, the principles, um, that are really kind of making decisions as opposed to the bus company. That's obviously, you know, a private company, represented, you know, they contract with us. And then we're gonna be discussing, uh, policies regarding school buses further at our next meeting, uh, but pretty much everything else is right there on that minutes.
U T C, Alan?
I'm disappointed to report that our December dinner meeting that canceled due to the weather. So we're supposed to meet tomorrow night.
Are they feeding him?
No.
Behave over review committee?
We actually established one today. Uh, we're gonna be meeting Monday, the 7th at 2:30, Mary Ann and John and I. We haven't had a meeting since our last meeting. Karen, I'm, Karen, did you get that? I'm assuming you got the message today. We'll talk after the meeting.
Okay, I put out the doodle poll so that I thought that's what I was going to do.
I'll touch base with you later.
Okay. Would you like, would you like a report on?
Do you have an update on?
Well, I have the minutes, which, which should end up late in your faculty.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So we essentially went over the charge that the board had given the committee, um, and looked at some state statute, um, regarding, um, the, um, charge to school boards, um, on, in the area of discipline. And so we're gonna be reviewing policy related to discipline to look at, um, aligning ourselves with state statute. A lot of it focused on restorative justice practices, so we're gonna take a look at that. Um, and then another charge to the committee was to serve as a dropout prevention committee. So we're gonna look at the statute a little more closely, see what's entailed with that, and, um, track, um, the discipline reports that we get every month, as well as absenteeism and tardiness reports that we get.
Can I see here, Mary Ann, you were, you're chair of the?
At John's request.
Okay. So now I know who'd ask for the update.
Okay.
Anything else, Mary Ann, or is that with someone? Thank you. Education Foundation, do we have any updates on the Education Foundation?
Uh, we do not. I'm, uh, in conversation with Peter Wood, but I have to report back something at the February meeting.
Okay. Spruce Board?
The December 20th meeting was canceled, so we have not been.
Wellness Committee, Brittany is not here tonight, I don't think, is she?
No, she's not.
And Community Relations, Scott's not here?
We meet tomorrow.
Okay. Very good, thank you, folks. Uh, we have a policy for consideration, so I'll hand it over to Joe.
Yes, uh, we, this is, uh, policy, J I H, questioning and searches of students and property. It's a first reading, um, and the committee had recommended its approval for a first reading. Personally, after Tim's comments, I'm thinking that, Joe, perhaps it needs to be further revised, but.
I know.
Because, you know, we, we added, one of the major concerns, um, that we had in terms of, you know, wanting to revise this policy was, was to kind of make it clear that, uh, you know, there was a policy not just regarding searches of students and property, but that also involved questioning. The regulation, um, is very detailed and very thorough, and that involves both questioning and searches. And so we thought that it certainly made sense to make parents aware, make students aware that, you know, we're not just talking about searches, we're also talking about questioning. So, but me personally, now that I'm looking at, you know, some of the language we added in that second paragraph, um, I personally don't like having restricting the ability of an administrator to question other members of the committee, they disagree with me. But.
So, Joe, would you like to welcome feedback and then bring it back to first reading next month, or do you wanna bring it to first meeting, see if it?
That would be my recommendation. Um, yeah, certainly other people may disagree, but I, I think that, that bears further discussion on, you know, potential ramifications of restricting questioning to students.
I would agree with you on that. Uh, do any other board members want to provide any feedbacks for the policy committee to take back on this particular policy, since you've seen it?
And the policy committee meeting is next Thursday, I believe. Next Thursday, if you want to attend.
We'll let Tim know. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, we have no old business, new business, we have some Hampton Academy activities we need to do.
Yes, advancing the, um, recommendation of Principal Tracy on the formal adoption of the Ascension Show Choir, N H A Gamers Club. I also included the policy and regulations that guide this protocol. They've gone through the informal stage to the formal stage. If the board ratifies this tonight, then it will be given what we call, as you know, an IRP value, Established Relative Position, which gives the monetary level to it, and then that puts it in place, uh, if, if indeed we have a number of students. So in order to do that and move up to that level, I need your ratification to move these to formal approval, uh, as presented in the exhibits.
Second. Are there any questions or discussion?
Go ahead. One of my questions was, I guess I was a little confused by the question mark, um, talking about, uh, the potential cost that notes will be absorbed in our present budget, but then noticing advisor stipends. then noticing advisor stipends. I guess we could just have a little bit further explanation.
What happens right there, Joe, is that these, once this is approved, and the board goes to the Stipend Review Committee that Dr. Glenn Cross chairs with two or three other members, and they have a matrix that then, and they will give this a formal fiscal value.
Okay.
Based on the number of participants, the time, what else, Dr. Glenn Cross?
Level of competition, the number of participants, the, like, length of season, there's a variety of criteria like that.
So let's say they give that IRP value of twenty, that comes back to the board for ratification, the collective bargaining contract says that twenty IRPs and is a dollar and three cents an IRP, then we have the money that we'll pay the advisor. That's, that's actually my question, just to illustrate.
So is that an estimate, though, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so, yeah, yeah. Did you want to add anything to it, Bill, either one? Bill?
Nope, I think people have specific questions about what the clubs are and what they do, and you have to answer those questions.
Let me also remind Board members that any co-curricular is an annual appointment. So in other words, if the budget can't absorb it, we don't have to offer it, or if we don't have a number of students to participate, then we wouldn't offer it as well. So just because it's ratified and endorsed, that means it's gonna be always following through each year.
On that notice, the gaming club, is that our old chess club that we, a couple of years ago? Didn't we take the chess club in deep?
Nope, they're two different ones.
They are two different...
Chess has a large following, just for chess, and then the gamers club is card games, as well as video games, as well as a variety of other games, but has an average following of about twenty to twenty-five students each time.
So is chess, then a paid advisor, or is that still a volunteer?
Nope, chess has gone back to be a paid advisor.
If we defund something, is that, do they have to go through the same process?
Great question. My, what Tim said tonight, my style has been for twenty-seven years, once we have an endorsement, the board stays there. It may not be a, it may not be dispaid for two or three years, and we may bring it back later and with modified the IRP value. So once it's formally approved, we leave it there like in a dormant state, and then when we have the interest from the students, then we'll reactivate it again.
But reevaluate IRP?
Yes, yes.
What level of monitoring is taking place for the digital?
For the...
The digital games.
Oh, we have, sorry, we have two staff members in here. One is out here, we're doing the card games and things, and the other one, they use this TV, and they can only do certain games at a, at a certain rating level, so they can't, it's not carte blanche, it's played on one TV.
It's gonna be like Call of Duty or something.
No. We're in class, you know.
Yes.
So if we approve this, it'll still come back to us once?
Yeah, the IRP value will come back to you, yes.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, we have some meeting dates to set, I believe.
Well, let's see, we have, as I mentioned earlier, we have Policy next week, building next week, Community Relations tomorrow night, Athletics on your budget?
Yep. So we had talked about having a special meeting in January for the strategic plan. We were able to confirm with Tim that he's willing to come back, but we have yet to get dates that he's available to come back. I wanted to bring it back to the board to see if he had thoughts about having it as a special meeting, separate from a board meeting. The purpose of the strategic planning would be to review our current strategic plan and update it as needed for one more year. I think we have one more year.
Excuse me.
Is it one more year we have left in the strategic plan?
I believe that's correct, yes.
And then we'll have to do the full gamut next time, which would be great exercise, given we're having a new Superintendent coming on board. So that would be the purpose. So I don't expect that we will need more than one quote-unquote strategic planning session, unlike last time, we had about three or four different sessions. So with that said, I just like your feedback on timing, if you'd like it separate from a board meeting, or if there's any strong feelings about that whole thing, before I reach out to Tim for dates.
I'd rather see it as part of a regular meeting.
Okay.
There isn't that much work to reaffirm it for another year. Next year, when we have to come up a whole new one, that's gonna be multiple meetings like it was when we had a bacon tree or whatever. It's my, my two cents, but I'm ready to motion to adjourn, although we are having a session.
We do have a...
I'm a little biased in that regard.
Mary Ann?
I'd rather not have the pressure of an agenda to get through. I'd rather have it as something separate, but that's just...
Anyone else have any thoughts about that topic?
What's the expected time consumption here with this?
I think we will be reaching out and having a conversation with Tim about that. He has to reacquaint himself with the strategic plan, and then I need to talk with him about our end goal for that day. I certainly don't want to have him feel pressured as well to try to condense something within an hour's time when he thinks it really warrants a two- to three-hour discussion. So that will obviously play a part in the conversation I have and the decision that we make based on that.
I mean, if we could do it ninety minutes, an hour and a half, we could still leave half an hour for report outs and things, and we could hold off on other agenda items since the topic is strategic, I'd be fine with that. You think it's gonna push over two hours unless we do, maybe that's the consideration, is combine it with a time extension as opposed to a separate meeting as a compromise between two meetings.
All right. I'll reach out to Tim, and we'll have a conversation. We are going to be getting this done by, before the end of February, so, and obviously, school break is in the middle of that as well, so I will be in touch. It might end up being a doodle poll, and if it is, please respond promptly. We have executive session. Would somebody please make a motion?
I recommend for MSA Sub-Session 4056A entering executive session to discuss evaluation of dependent schools.
Great, all of them favor?